City Commission meeting for December the 10th will come to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham, Commissioner Galt.
Present.
Commissioner Rose.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Kayler.
Present. Tonight, I'd like to ask Richard Edward Jones to please come up and do our invocation. And then, our pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by Meg Hancock, who is a Paducah Tillman High School sophomore. Thank you, Richard.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly most gracious Father, as we come before you, Father God, just calling it upon your name. Father God, we just ask you right now to just be in the midst of this meeting, Father God. Touch all the elected officials, Father God, that everything that be said would be done in decency and in order. Father God, bless your people that are assembled around this room as well, Father God. We love you, we thank you for all things that you're about to do in the city of Paducah. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And, Richard, I'd just like to say congratulations on your new degree. You're welcome. Well, the city manager isn't here to tell us yet if we have any additions or deletions.
We have none.
All right. So we'll move on. And here's the fun part of my job. Tonight, I'm doing a recognition for the Christmas ornament contest winners. And we did a call for ornaments for the mayor's Christmas tree. And if you all haven't seen it, I'm sure you have if you came down through the lobby, but it's a beautiful tree out in the lobby, and it's filled with beautiful ornaments from all the children that participated in the city of Paducah school system. So tell all of your friends to, you know, have their friends to come by and see all of those beautiful ornaments that the kids worked so hard on. So tonight, I would like to give out the winners, and if you'll come up, I have a certificate The winners in kindergarten through third grade category, first place is Caitlin Higdon. And Caitlin. Congratulations. Your ornament was beautiful. And Caitlin did the seal of the city of Paducah. You want to get your picture made? I think it's a grandmother. Turn this around so it's better. Come here, smile. Thank you. Second place is Madison Patel. Is she here tonight? Madison? Madison did baby Jesus in the manger, and it is beautiful. We ask that the ornaments be made out of recycle materials, if possible. A lot of the kids used recycle materials. Third place is Emma Waltman. And she did recycle plastic case with a Christmas tree. An honorable mention is Keaton Hausman, if he's here. And that was a red car cruising down Broadway. So you can see all of those on the tree. Fourth through eighth grade, first place is Sophia Browning. And Sophia did a. She did a quilt ornament. Here's your certificate, and thank you so much for participating. Do you want your picture made? We had Bro out there. Is your mom here? Okay. You couldn't drive, could you? Thank you. Second place is Ryan Gilatuck from St. Francis de Sales. It's the ornament that he did, or she did. Ryan, she did. And it was beautiful. Thank you. Have I done that one? Erin?
Siblings.
Oh, siblings. That's great. So talent runs in your family. And Erin did a cotton ball snowman on a recycled plastic lid. It was very creative. Honorable mention, Jazz Hudson. And Jazz did the Chief Paducah Mosaic, and it was wonderful. Thank you so much. You want to get your picture made?
Sure.
Ninth through 12th grade, we had only had one ornament, and that's Talia Hausman. Is she here tonight? And it was a piece of wood with holly turning into a dub. It was very beautifully done. The best use of materials, Morgan Elementary School, and they used recycled Christmas cards. And they were folded into beautiful hexagonal, octagonal shapes with glitter. It was really, really nice. Anyone here from Morgan? Okay. Most Christmas spirit is Clark Elementary School. They submitted 94 ornaments. Thank you, guys. How are you all tonight? Let's turn around so we can get our picture made. Thank you very much. Okay, tonight, we have a presentation on a handicappable guide service, Mr. Tom Bruzan. Tom, you can just go up to the podium there.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the mayor for being gracious enough to let me come here and speak to you for a few minutes today. I'm actually United States Marine Corps, 6869, right, guide of a combat infantry unit. But I didn't really come here to talk about that. What I really want to talk about is a guide service. It's actually not a guide service. What we do is we take handicapped people and wounded warriors fishing. And we're hurting for money, we want to get a pontoon boat. And we only have a boat, we can only take like two or three people out, and we want to take eight people. And just asking all the communities around to somehow come up with some money for us. What we do is post 68, three years ago, Sergeant Chase Matthews, you may have heard the name before, he lost both his legs in Iraq. We built him a house. On 10 acres, the house was totally built just for his handicaps. And what we do now is we just take any, if anybody has knows any handicapped people that want to go fishing, my number's on the brochure's out the door. They can call me, and we'll take them fishing next summer on Barclay or Kentucky Lakes. And we actually, my buddy's name is Noel, he's from Grand Rivers. He's been doing this for 20 years. He's a Vietnam veteran. My post commander and his wife are both Vietnam veterans. And all we're actually trying to do is give back to the communities. And to be honest with you, I think the community should give back to us. We're the ones who defend this country. And Noel, my buddy Noel, right now, he'd be here with me tonight, but he's out of town helping some handicapped people somewhere. And we're going to have a meeting. I have contacted all the mayors from eight different counties now. And this mayor here is as gracious as any of them. And you guys are lucky to have her. And just help us out here in any way you can. We're going to have a garage sale, and it's going to be in April. I haven't set a date yet. And we're going to collect stuff, then we're going to have an auction. I have 120 different businesses that helped us build that house for Chase Matthews. And I got to contact all of them, and we're going to get this pontoon boat. I, to be honest with you, I think this guy should have a cruise ship so he can take 800 people out fishing, and handicapped people and wounded warriors. And I don't want to take up any more of your meeting.
Tom, I really appreciate you coming today, and we had, I had a nice discussion. And the flyers that you have outside has the website where people can go. I know that you're doing a fundraiser the first part of the year at Green Turtle Bay.
Yes.
So everyone out there, if they want to get information on that, can get it from the brochure outside.
Or they can, they can call me, Mayor.
Right.
My number, I'm Tom B. on the bottom of it, and you can call me day or night, anytime.
So I really appreciate you coming, and we wish you a lot of success with your fundraiser. And I will be up there.
I know you will, Mayor, and I appreciate it so much. And I just want to say one more thing. Go United States Marine Corps!
Okay, and so we're going to go on to the PRA reorganization. City manager Jeff Peterson is going to speak on this.
Thank you, Mayor Kayler. I've got a narrative I want to read, and then I've got some PowerPoints that I'll go to the laptop for. So if you bear with me. This past June, I was directed by the city commission to develop a reorganization plan for the Department of Main Street, otherwise known as Paducah Renaissance Alliance. This action reflected the instability and perceived lack of effectiveness that has plagued this department for several years. I do not believe that the lack of perceived success or effectiveness of PRA is attributable to any one of the factors of structured leadership, funding, or staffing alone. Rather, I believe that the department has suffered and ultimately failed to gain confidence due to conflicting expectations and overall lack of clarity of purpose and direction. I believe the PRA made progress over the past couple of years in developing a framework to progress downtown revitalization through visioning and strategic planning. Where it fell short is at the ground level of program design and implementation. In my opinion, this happened in large measure because the city attempted to assume too broad of a role and failed to define and strengthen niche, and define niche roles for the city that would optimize the assets of a good public-private partnership. The time that has passed since the call for reorganization has provided a resource for review, reflection, discovery, and strategic thinking. In the process, I have become better educated on the subject of downtown revitalization and have better understanding in what it is that can be done to enhance the appeal of downtown Paducah. I've had a multitude of conversations with stakeholders ranging from PRA board members to downtown proprietors to city commission members. I've also listened very closely to the views and experience of city department directors who have been a big part of the city's downtown revitalization effort over the years. I've read reports on downtown revitalization published by the Brookings Institution, Kentucky Main Street Program, and most notably, the recommendations of the 2006 Downtown Paducah Market Analysis that was prepared by Economics Research Associates of Washington, D.C. Finally, my recommendation is heavily influenced by my three years of experience with PRA in Paducah, set against a backdrop of over 30 years of experience in local government administration. The values that are always foremost for government-funded programs are effectiveness and efficiency, and they apply here as readily as is the case with more traditional city programs such as street maintenance or police patrol. The difference between core city programs such as these and downtown revitalization is that in the case of downtown revitalization, the city is choosing to inject its participation into an effort or enterprise that is inherently private in nature and objective. We must be clear, as I believe we have not been in the past, why the city is getting involved and what the city's role will be. In the process, we must not place the city ahead of stakeholder initiative, collaboration, and prioritization. In what must be viewed as a public-private partnership, the city needs to responsibly determine where it can make a difference in downtown revitalization and where it can be successful. My recommendation is to both retain all budgetary resources currently allocated to PRA and to continue to align the city's efforts going forward in downtown revitalization with the national and state Main Street programs. Of major importance, however, will be the disbandment of Main Street PRA as a freestanding city department in favor of placement of important program development and administration with existing structure, expertise, resources, and stakeholder platforms. Experience has shown us that the PRA as a freestanding city department did not meet standards for either effectiveness or for efficiency. As is typical with agencies that are formed by government with undefined measures and targets for success, a zest to create identification and perpetuate existence of new agency can absorb staff and financial resources that should be building partnerships and packaging programs intended to get people downtown. In my view, Main Street PRA promoted itself too much as the means and solution to downtown revitalization, and now needs to refine its role as advocate, coordinator, and provider of stimulus funding for designated development programs. To be most effective in its defined role and to optimize efficiencies available in the city organization, the organization will take the following form. Number one, city department of planning will create new focus on downtown development through the addition of a downtown development specialist position. The position will be effective through utilization of departmental resources, expertise, program templates, and experience with other citizen boards. The position will function as Main Street manager and will focus on, A, programs and incentives for building rehabilitation and occupancy to include financial incentives; B, targeted retail recruitment; C, code review and reform to encourage mixed-use development in the downtown area; and D, liaison and communication with nonprofit stakeholder organizations in downtown and lower town. Number two, city department of park services will host the new position of special events coordinator. This position will focus on entertainment events designed to attract people to the downtown area in a manner that will ensure maximum coordination and resource sharing with internal city departments and other partners. Position will liaison with the Main Street Advisory Board about entertainment concepts designed to get feet on the street. Number three, building rehabilitation and occupancy programs will be developed and administered using all applicable resources in the planning department in addition to the downtown development specialists and Main Street Advisory Board. They will draw heavily upon resources that contribute to the unprecedented success of the Fountain Avenue Rehabilitation Program. Fourth, the Lower Town Association and a prospective new downtown association will conduct promotional activity in respective areas utilizing initiative and creativity of stakeholders. Support funding will be made available to each under guidelines to be developed. Fifth, Columbia Theater, excuse me, restoration initiative will remain with the Columbia Club. This building restoration is critically important to downtown redevelopment as a catalyst for return to the downtown that has place-based experiences with a focus on culture and entertainment. And last, a renewed emphasis on and commitment to public infrastructure improvements in the downtown area through more cohesion with PRDA and the recently completed master plan. So with that said, I'd like to show the mission a little illustration of how this would look financially going forward. And then I've got a cursor on this. So, arrow forward. Okay. Why isn't that coming up?
Keep hitting. It'll come up one at a time.
Oh, one at a time. Okay. I should have worn my glasses because I can barely read that. But I've, I'm going to start with a few bullet points from my presentation. Again, the existing Department of Main Street will be disbanded. Secondly, the existing budget that the city has, which is approximately $450,000 per year, will be retained with some reallocation of dollars from that budget. Next, the PRA logo and identity will be replaced by that of Main Street. Certification with Kentucky Main Street will continue, or at least the effort to remain certified will continue. Position of downtown development specialist will reside in the planning department, as I mentioned, and will report to the director of planning. This will in effect be a division of the planning department set up for attention to downtown and lower town, none unlike the effort that is directed to Fountain Avenue now. It will in fact become a form of neighborhood revitalization. Position of director of special events or special events coordinator will reside in the parks department. I think it's important to note that a lot of the support resources that the city contributes to special events now, whether they are those that we conduct or that we support being conducted by others, come from that department. And this idea of bringing this position into that department in part is to ensure maximum coordination of resources that exist throughout the city departments, something that unfortunately there have been impediments to in recent years. Main Street Advisory Board will remain in place with expectation that it function at a strategic and review level. Promotional activities will be conducted through existing lower town association and a prospective new association to form in the downtown area that would be similar. Each of those associations would have the opportunity to request funding support from the city for promotional programs that could be very much like those programs that the city currently financially supports through the Department of Main Street. Okay. There again is a budget allocation for the department right now of about $450,000. I've attempted to project going ahead to the beginning of the next budget year. Again, this doesn't have anything to do with the remaining six months of this year. That's a whole nother issue. But if we were to clear the slate and set this up based on a projection going forward for 12 months, this is what it might look like. Starting with the allocation of resources to the park services department, it would total about $146,000 of the $450,000. There would be one full-time position created and two part-time or seasonal positions created, totaling whatever that figure is that I can't read. There would be obviously some monies needed for support services, supplies, printing, advertising, that sort of thing. And then you see the big appropriation, excuse me, under events, I believe, it says contracts. That is essentially the live-on-Broadway appropriation that exists in the current budget transferred over to this department to be made available for whatever series of events, festivals, whatever, that is determined to be in the offering for the, for the year. So essentially, the same amount of money going into events. I heard a lot of comment that the live-on-Broadway as we know it needs to be reviewed and perhaps freshened up or rethought, or even there are even those who think that it's, the time has come and gone, and we need to look at diverting those monies into something different in form. So the slate, I think, needs to be cleared there, and the ability and opportunity provided for staff, and I think ultimately with input from the advisory board, to take a fresh look at the type of entertainment that, that we believe is going to accomplish the overall mission of the Main Street program with that, and that is to bring people to the downtown area. So that's one component of it. The planning department, which is where the position of downtown development specialist would be placed, there would be the one full-time professional position there and also one part-time position funded there, along with the fringes. The total amount of funding that would be needed in that department for this effort to come from there would be $186,000. You see money for, again, office support, advertising, supplies, travel, training, that kind of thing. And also a line item for visioning and consulting because that would be the area that, that board visioning would, would come from in the years that that would happen. Also, there would more than likely be the interest or need from time to time for professional consulting in the downtown, particularly when I think about targeted retail recruitment, how database that has become, to get that person in a position to market downtown knowledgeably and to take information to prospective retailers that they actually want and that means something to them. Promotion, this is one that is attempting to, again, reflect, at least financially, pretty much what we're doing now. You see something called Arts and Culture for an amount of money there. That really mirrors cumulative payments that we are making to several arts and culture agencies in the downtown area right now for annual support. I think that's important, if that continue in my research and readings. And by the way, one of my first thoughts going into this was, gosh, maybe we need to reshuffle the deck, do some kind of a study or some elongated planning process and figure out what we need to do. The more I read, the more I became convinced that we're not, we're not at square one here. We're not at step one. We're well along the way here. This community in this downtown has assets that other, I'm speaking to the choir here, other communities dream about. So to some extent, it's a matter, I think, of continuing to support key elements of our downtown that are there, that have been invested in, that are very important to putting feet on the street and bringing downtown. And we are doing some support funding from several of those, and I would certainly propose that we continue doing that. You see a couple of line items of $25,000 each for support, financial support to the two associations. Right now, the Lower Town Association, we're supporting financially to the tune of $15,000 a year for the festival. That's in addition, by the way, to almost $60,000 with the Vind Kind support that the city contributes to that festival. We would want to continue to do that. There's some other monies that have been spent sporadically in the lower town area for things such as the visiting artist program. I would propose that we make money available to be proposed, to be granted by us for use for activities such as that, that were prioritized and the initiative coming from the people in the area itself. Real stakeholder ownership in that, I think, brings about higher credibility, probably greater support for it when the activities actually are being conducted. $25,000 in a downtown association, and if that didn't happen in the first year, we could continue doing what we've done for a while, although it would be my hope in the long run, we wouldn't continue to do that. But we are spending somewhere in the neighborhood of $10,000 to $15,000 a year now in the annual holiday promotion. So that money would be moved into that 25, and then the balance of that represents at least part of the funding that we are doing more on a year-round basis in some of the promotional activities. There are some other monies from that that might be found in a couple of other accounts that I built into those operation accounts, but that captures most of it. So my proposal would be that the respective associations within their areas of concentration, expertise, stakeholdership, get together and collectively make assessments of what they think is needed to accomplish certain things, and that a proposal for this funding be made. It would be reviewed by the downtown advisory board, Main Street Advisory Board, and presumably the funding support would then be made. But the difference is, these programs would not originate with the city. There's probably an example within that of how things have progressed with the Lower Town Festival itself, that as I understand, actually was a city event at one time, but in recent years has been conducted by folks in that area, and by all estimations and based on every account I heard, has only gotten bigger and better every year. Well, folks, there's a lesson to learn from that. There's a role for the city to play, and it tends to be more in the catalyst, the incentivizing. When we try to stay with something, inevitably, it tends to kind of plane off and does not necessarily improve as we go. So our role actually going forward is probably more important to look at it as a financial role, to play a part in making a difference in areas such as some offerings there rather than staying in the idea generation stage or determining the priorities, rather than having folks that are, that are on the ground actually do that kind of thing. Okay. A third component of this, and let me say that there would no longer be a freestanding office, and because of that, we would save about $25,000 a year in building rent, building support, and that sort of thing. There would also be some savings associated with sort of merging major activities into other departments. So effectively, there were some monies freed up here. We're also looking at two professional salaries compared to what was only two years ago four, and then we riffed one in the budget, and it's three this year, so we're eliminating at least one FTE here. So there's some money being freed up. I feel very strong, based on our experience here, all the research I've done. I feel very strong, based on our experience here, all the research I've done, and events unfortunately going on in the community as recently as today, associated with deteriorating buildings, that we need to find a way as city government to help incite reinvestment in physical structures of buildings so that the buildings can not only remain, which is a historic preservation thing, but be functional and attractive for conversion to whatever use they might be. And by the way, mixed use is the idea, whether it be upper-level living or Main Street retail or what have you. We need to think about where we can make a difference in formulating programs and putting resources into them. Not to say that the city can or should fully fund a particular program. We obviously want to try to leverage involvement from as many sources as we can. We very recently created the Roof Stabilization Program. Had we created that six months earlier, we might not have a problem downtown we have today that came about as a result of the storm, but I won't get into any more detail there. By all acclaim, that is a smart program, an effective program. Probably all of us would like to be able to put more money into that program, but we've got a start. And it didn't take long before we were able to administratively put the machinery in place to get the process going, to have funds requested and make the first grant or two. So that's been a success so far, at least at those levels. We need to identify more programs like that, not just to bring about the things that I mentioned before, but to also provide tools for our Downtown Development Specialists to have to really talk to people about in terms of the role that the city can play and what the city is prepared to do to help make their interests possible or more feasible. So as you look around the country, you see all kinds of other examples of programs that the city funds or participates in fundings. I've seen things like HVAC upgrade. Of course, we had the facade loan here at one time, that's a very common one. Upper-level living initiative is very common, especially amongst those downtowns, and I think we're one of those that has an interest in people residing in the downtown area. Is it possible that we as a city could do something to incite that? The more people living downtown, the more demand for retail services, the more demand for a lot of things that unfortunately people have, you know, left the downtown area for years ago. So it's a critical mass issue there, so that's kind of big-picture thinking. Having said all that, there's about $120,000 that is available to put into programs per year from this reorganization. So I've illustrated a Program Two and a Program Three using that $60,000. Program One, we know what that is, that's our Roof Stabilization Program. This year, we're funding it from monies that really didn't come out of the PRA operational budget. We brought those monies in, we closed out an old program, and I think we made a modest appropriation from the investment fund. So that's funding it this year. Next year, we can fund it at the level I'm proposing of $75,000 from monies unspent in this current year's Main Street budget. In other words, we're going to underspend the budget this year because of the staffing differences from what was budgeted. I would propose that we take that savings, which I would project to be adequate, to put $75,000 of that in the Roof Stabilization Program for next year, and that we make funding available for two new programs at the level of $60,000. Now again, people, this is very preliminarily, but we've got to start somewhere. I really think we need to get some structure here. We need to get some structure that mirrors the strategy, and I don't think we've had enough of that. And if you don't have structure, sometimes you don't have commitment. If you don't have structure, sometimes you don't have clarity. Sometimes you can't communicate something to somebody with much confidence or much clarity, and that's really what I think we need to do here. So if we were to do something like this, indeed, after next fiscal year, which would be June 30th, 2015, after that $75,000 ran out, we would be in a position of needing to find money from somewhere else to continue to put $75,000 into that program. In my view, by that time, if, you know, if people need some time to be convinced whether this kind of use of resources is wise or not, I think that's enough time. And if we were able to determine, or if circumstances would make it such that you felt it was, I would think $75,000 diverted from somewhere else in the budget would be a doable thing. So I'm going to leave that one open for you. I think we need not just one program, I think we need several programs. And again, I would hope that we could leverage some way or another participation by other interests and who knows what else might be out there. I think that commitment brings attention, and for us to be able to show this kind of structure and this kind of program-driven effort is going to impress potentially other potential participants in this kind of thing. I can tell you from experience, for example, in the area of foundation funding, when you look at grants from foundations, they want to see evidence that you're doing some stuff for yourself. Well, it's a heck of a lot easier to show that and to show it with credibility when you can show it structurally in your budget and you can show policy development and you can show program descriptions and you can show successes that have come as a result of it. So that's part of the grand scheme here. So how does it look in total? This is again with the $70,000 or $75,000, whatever it was, that takes this total budget, about $75,000 beyond what is currently being allocated. But again, I pointed out, in order to do that beyond the end of the fiscal year after the one we're in, we would need to bring some resources in from the outside. If we were unable to do that, then we're down to the 450 that represents the current city budget commitment to this program. So I attempted to do this with existing dollars with that exception, but I am suggesting to you that it's worthy of considering that $75,000 addition going into this represents priority for the city, but we can work that out over the course of the next couple of years and the next couple of budget sessions. So with that, I would answer any questions you might have. We do have an item later on the agenda tonight. I would say that there has been some time passed here, and I've been criticized for that, but I personally think time is a great resource sometimes, and it sometimes gives you the ability to see things clearly and develop a stronger resolve and conviction. But clearly, we need to get going and getting the people hired. So later in the agenda tonight, in fact, I do have an action item on there asking for your support to proceed with the recruitment of these two positions, should you agree with this proposal.
Okay.
Who will take the lead on forming a downtown association? Are you expecting the downtown merchants to do that?
Well, I think it's, you know, some way, somehow, we're looking for some way for a coming together. I don't have the answer for that question. I think that obviously we would find some way to make it known that we were interested in this kind of a partnership and that it was dependent on, you know, some kind of coming together. I'm assuming that there are folks down there that would champion that and that there is leadership down there. I, like all of you, are seeing some new faces down there, some new things occurring. I mean, I think there's always some level of reinvigoration going on. I'm very confident it could be found and it would develop. But again, if it, for whatever reason, it didn't happen the first year, I think we could continue doing what we're doing for a while until it did. But I feel very strong that that's where we'd want to get to be.
Can we get the lights on?
The, should I, is this the time for questions? Okay. On the Special Events Coordinator within the Park Service, it looks, according to your PowerPoint, you have them as coordinating all major events and activities in the city of Paducah? But is your plan for it to be more concentrated on downtown activities?
Primarily concentrated on downtown activities for sure, that would be the priority. That may have been a bit of an overstatement, you know, working with Mark, we're trying to kind of work that out. I think it needs to be realized that one of the opportunities here is in fact some of the synergies that could be gained by having, you know, sort of a single platform launching those things out of a single city department, whereas in the past, it's been, I mean, I think the effort has always been pretty good there, but the cohesion has sometimes been a little bit more difficult. So I think also having what I would consider to be a professional position come in there also brings with it the opportunity to bring some review of some of the events we're doing now, not necessarily in the downtown area, but perhaps elsewhere in the community. I'd like to see that be an asset of that position as well.
I guess my other question is, it's not someone to go into the Park Service Department to take over what they're doing now. You would be expecting this person to look for new activities.
Well, I think, starting number one, with the activities, dollar budget amount that formerly had been dedicated to downtown, that under my proposal still will be dedicated to downtown. We're going to set this up so that there's separate accounting in these two departments to show these dollars where they're being spent so that they don't lose their identity as being part of the Main Street program. So the priority would be with the downtown area for sure. I'm saying that I think that the whole organization and ultimately the community would benefit by having more of a single set of eyes that can ensure coordination and resource sharing because they've got a look at all of it going on at the same time.
When you say the entire organization, are you talking about the Park Service Department or the whole city?
City organization.
I mean, I've said before, I think they did a great job of everything I've seen that they've done, but I would want this person to be adding to it, not just doing what they've been currently been doing by other staff.
We are in total agreement on that, and Mark understands that and supports that.
Are there other cities that do that, that have the Events Coordinator within the Park's Department?
Very common, very common.
I believe that at one time, and I, she may have.
Mark's back there.
Is she back there?
Mark is.
Oh, Mark. Didn't we do this once before to a certain extent with, didn't we have someone that worked out of your office and primarily worked downtown with landscaping and things like that? And, I mean, we kind of split the baby there, but.
But they really didn't do.
Do events coordinating, but she did work out of your office and primarily worked downtown. It was just a little different job description, but.
It was more in as far as the maintenance and.
Right.
And cleanup.
But the area was downtown and to coordinate and liaison with the people downtown.
Yes, it was.
And only in that area, right?
It was primarily, yeah. I think we referred to it as the row zone.
I think we did.
As the what?
The row zone. It was Row Morse's job. It was the row zone.
Well, on that, on the Park Service Special Events Coordinator, the contracts for $40,000, is that what you're talking about for Live on Broadway or what might replace Live on Broadway? Is that to contract with another someone else or other organization to do that, or is that for promotion, cost associated?
That is the current year appropriation for Live on Broadway, moved over here to be made available for whatever series of events were hatched to, maybe it's Live on Broadway again in its current form or some other configuration. That's the dollars being made available that essentially are in the budget right now. And I would say, in answer to your question, would we contract that out? Not under this framework because we'd be hiring a professional to coordinate the whole process.
He's an old PRA Main Street person. I'm glad to see this. You know, what are there, about 2,000 Main Street cities, but Paducah is one of about 125, I'm going to guess, that are the, that top Main Street city winner. And so I think this is good, we're pushing on this department.
Well, I do want to say and emphasize that if you don't, I think your standard for appraisal there should be if you think that it will strengthen the effort because that's what it's structured to do. Maybe it's focusing more in some areas, maybe it's forcing some more focus in some areas. Maybe it's putting the city more in the lead in some areas and less in others, and maybe it's putting us in a better position in some than we were before. That's what I tried to do here, and there's some philosophy behind that. A lot of experience out there with what's working elsewhere and what isn't. You know, we need to do a better job going forward of coordinating our effort with the Renaissance Master Plan implementation. You know, we don't need to be quarreling between departments on what we ought to do and what priorities. We need more of a cohesive approach to all that kind of thing. And I have an appropriation in here that's in the Planning Department of, I believe, 20,000, 22, 25, I don't remember where it ended up, that is there just for minor projects from year to year that we're doing now. And this year in the Main Street budget, that project is some kind of signage in the Lower Town area. I'm not sure exactly what the word for it is, Steve Urban isn't here, and that's being worked in now. We need to continue to be able to do some things like that, ground level sort of things, if you will. I had one executive director of one of our cultural agencies suggest that we need to spruce up the parking lot behind the Fire Department. You know, he's absolutely right. It's just bare and kind of ugly. And the other parking lot downtown, and I've heard all kinds of descriptions of that, but I made up my mind the first time I saw it, that's not ugly, it's kind of attractive. But then there's infrastructure in there, landscaping, whatever, that helps make it that way, and why shouldn't we think about starting some kind of a program to do that in that other parking lot too? Because as we all know, for whatever reason, on any given weekend night or whatever, and there's a lot of activity going on, there's essentially a whole lot more draw to that parking lot off Broadway than there does the other one, despite the fact that they're equal distance to a lot of the venues downtown. So figure that out. Certainly the street has something to do with that, but I think we could make that more attractive. So I see that as a very, very good suggestion, and it kind of makes me wonder, how did we miss on that one, you know? Why wasn't that more obvious to us? Well, this came from a stakeholder.
So what was the former PRA Board will now fold in, because we expanded it earlier this year, we voted it, is that now the Main Street Advisory Board?
Yeah, well, to formalize this, when the actions going forth, we'll have to amend the ordinance that creates a Department of Main Street, and I'm not sure just what we need to do. I want to retain that board, whether it's exactly that form or not, we haven't really got into. But the main thing we need to do is take an action to do away with the Department of Main Street. That's what the ordinance created right now. PRA is nothing more than a tagline or a mantra that's recognized in the ordinance, but that's it. It's formally called the Department of Main Street. So that would need to be done away with and then provision made for the, for a Main Street Advisory Board to be in place to support the Main Street activities that would be conducted through the Planning Department.
So is your plan, though, to roll that board into that role?
Today it is, yeah. Can't say that I've spent an inordinate amount of time thinking that one through, but I think quite frankly that that's been one of the successes of the last year or two, is I think that board has reached a better elevation. And I think, going forward, I feel pretty good about the contributions they can make to this effort.
I have a few questions. Do you all have any more questions?
Not right now.
Okay, we can come back. On the PRA logo and identity will be replaced by Main Street, so will we actually be rebranding it, and how much will that cost? Are we going to do away with allies and opportunities and rebrand the whole thing?
Let me suggest, we've been spending a lot of money promoting the words "PRA" for the last few years, and that's one of the things I think that we're trying to do away with is promoting a brand. I think it needs to be more substance, maybe going forward and less style, but what will it cost? It shouldn't cost anything to do away with that. I am not taking away from the razzle-dazz kind of appeal of a term like "PRA," and I've read the memo of my predecessor that created, and I understand all that kind of stuff. This reorganization is about spending limited resources more effectively and really kind of targeting those to meet the needs and objectives, I think, that today define, and also in the process maybe recognizing where we've made some progress and can divert resources. So there will be a Main Street program within the Planning Department that will have its identity where I think it needs to be, but yet won't be flying the flag quite the same way as what PRA did before. I think in the past, there was a different objective there.
And the promotional activities to be conducted through existing Lower Town Associations and to be formed downtown associations. and to be formed downtown associations, with each eligible to submit annual request for funding. What's that? Like, how much, or what is that?
Well, the difference would be, for example, the holiday promotion campaign is largely a city product now. There's some involvement from the PRA Board, but not as much involvement, participation, I think, from the stakeholders downtown is what there really should be. I think we want to incite more of that. You know, we talk about things like how important it is for uniformity and hours and that kind of thing. There's not as much of that downtown as what a lot of people think there should be, and I think that if we incite people to come together and find some common standards, common modes of operation, then it's more likely to come about. If we do these things and say, if you like it, you can participate; if you're not, just continue to do your own thing. I believe there are only twelve businesses that participated in our Christmas program this year. That's not enough. There's something missing there. And I think our proper role there is to provide support funding and some kind of incentive for the development of a program that hopefully can garner more widespread participation than what we've been able to, at least the last couple of years.
Maybe I don't understand the way it's written. It just sounds like you're separating, like, lower-town and downtown, and they can submit a request, each organization.
Well, I'm basically separating it by the functions that we've been funding and providing financial support to now. That's all. It's not intended to bring a separation or force one or anything like that. It's simply recognizing the activities that we're funding right now.
There was another question. On the Main Street budget, on the promotion, for the lower-town association and the art festival, there has been talk that the lower-town neighborhood association will not be the entity, the Fabol 1C3, that there will be a new Fabol 1C3 formed. Isn't that correct, Alan? When we had our last meeting, we talked about Michael in New Coria.
I thought they were going to, I thought they were going to just get a Fabol 1C3 so that anybody who donated would then have the full tax advantage. I think it's going to pretty much stay the same. I know they're just, they're trying to build up their reserve for the Arts and Music Festival, so if, you know, they had a catastrophic, a rainout or whatever, and they just, it was a financial bust, that they would have, you know, some reserve to cover that.
Oh, once again, I may have misunderstood it, but I swear, they said if, that the neighborhood association would still be there as volunteers, but that the money would not be funneled through the neighborhood association.
I think they just, I think they...
That it would be a new Fabol 1C3, because we don't have one. We have a Fabol 1C4.
Right. I get them, but they just were going to get a C3, just...
I think that would have to be clarified there.
What is, for the lower-town, our special mail, we're making a payment of fifteen thousand to some qualified Oral One something, right, John?
Well, you can use a Fabol 1C4, but, you know, it's a different type of setup. It's better if it's a Fabol 1C3.
I'm glad you brought the part about the PRA being advertised, because, again, being an old PRA Board member, there were some of us, old Board members, who never could figure out why we were advertising PRA instead of, we were advertising PRA, but we didn't advertise those things that we should have been advertising. We spent a lot of time and effort on PRA and not anything else. So, that's, thanks for bringing that up. And, of course, then there's the logo, Main Street, the national, just the National Main Street logo. That works.
Yeah, I mean...
I mean, you don't have to reinvent the wheel.
I have all the respect for the individuality of Paducah and the visioning and recognizing what's distinct and unique about Paducah, but I think this is about framework. This is about maybe a wider identity. For example, one of the questions that came to me a couple weeks ago from a member of the Columbia Club group, who is presenting next week, by the way, as you probably know, "Are you going to continue a certified Main Street, because to do so will qualify us for certain funding opportunities?" Our pledge is to try to. Now, I won't rule out the possibility. There could be a gap here because of a lapse, but we're going to try to work against that. Heck, I'm attending the National Main Street Conference with Steve Urban, just to do what we have to do to convince people that, you know, we don't want to lose our certification and look at all of this. But that's an example of the importance of it, I think. Main Street has, I think, a common theme throughout the country, and the bottom line with all of it is that there's an effort being made in this community to turn its downtown around or to move it forward. There are different pathways. You know, the four pillars are what they are, and they all sort of start with historic preservation, because after all, Main Street was hatched by this National Register for Historic Preservation, as I understand that, and National Trust. But in a community where we are experiencing some of the effects of old buildings that have not been reinvested in, I think we need to be serious about that piece of this thing, because holes down there, I mean, you've heard some of these things before from previous directors. I don't need to repeat all those, but...
And that goes to my question.
Mr. Galt.
Because I do strongly believe in the four components of the Main Street program, which I know is no surprise to you. But just so I have it straight in my head, the downtown specialist would handle the economic development or economic restructuring component and the design component.
Yeah, and I now know what all those things mean.
Okay.
The last six months.
The special events coordinator would probably also handle a portion of the design component and the promotions component, and both of them would interact with the stakeholders. And when you start filling out those reports, essentially be the organization component.
I think so, and I think that's entirely workable. I really do. And I think that under the guidance and direction of the two respective department directors and myself, looking at it from, you know, my place, and maybe more communication with the City Commission, I think it can work. I really do. I, you know, I don't want to say, I don't want to go too far in saying what has disappointed me from my perspective as city manager, maybe where I think I've disappointed myself in certain things, but I can tell you that the department director team is all behind this, because they have seen the worst side of what can happen when siloing happens, and the things that people are here to do on behalf of the taxpayers, which is be resourceful and be efficient and be effective, aren't happening. And I think a certain amount of that was, gosh, I don't want to be critical, but, you know, we're PRA, we're different, we've got a da-da-da sort of thing. And, of course, there are those who would say, yeah, but they don't want to be like government, because government can't be effective. Well, we need to figure out how we can be effective, and that's, again, what this is about. And I think we go too far in one direction and pass up our niche or opportunity that's, that lies somewhere else.
So, to maintain that certification, your thought process would be, the downtown specialist would serve as the acting Main Street manager?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And would be our intention to hire somebody that's, has some experience. This would not be entry level in the sense of somebody right out of college unless they were very good and had some applicable experience. We want somebody that can hit the ground running.
Okay.
And so, I'm glad to hear Commissioner Rhodes say, we could use the National Main Street emblem without having to rebrand it and spend all that money on a new brand.
Oh, I see where you're coming from.
I just didn't want to spend the money.
I think you could, as long as you maintain your certification, right?
Use it?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'm sure you...
Because that would go on out of our letterheads that they would send out.
Wish I could describe you what it looks like right now. Maybe Carol can, but I can't.
We could do that, Steve. I just don't want to spend money rebranding anything again.
And then you're going to advertise again, and we don't need to, because it's, yeah, right.
Are there any other questions?
Any, do you all have anything else?
No, I'm pleased we're getting it on paper.
So, from this step, then tonight, we would, under Personnel Actions, adopt the two, we would disband PRA as it is, those positions, dissolve them.
Are those old positions dissolved in this action, too?
We're removing them from the table and moving them to the...
Okay. That would be the action tonight, which would allow us to begin the recruiting. Again, until you take action to approve the hiring, the city's not committed, but we need to, if you believe this is the direction you want to go, I would certainly like the ability to proceed with recruiting.
And what's the timeframe? Job descriptions posted and...
Job descriptions are almost complete, probably just a final review. There's been some work done at the department level with Cindy and myself. So, I would say, it would be my objective, what is it, Tuesday today, to get this stuff out next week, start the formal process next week. Where do we go typically? Four, five weeks? Maybe we could cut a week off that, so we're...
I'm not pushing. I think it's important we get the right people. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just trying to get a timeframe. We've done it this long. I think it's important we get the right people.
Well, you're going to need to be planning this spring and summer right away.
Right.
So, I think it is important that you move quickly.
Close to the first of February, yes, we could get some people in place, for sure. And we realize, and Mark and Steve both realize, that there are some things that probably are going to need to progress before these folks get here. But I've seen a great amount of commitment by several departments and several individuals to keep this ship moving over the last six months, and not that I want to lean on them longer and run them longer necessarily, but I know the commitment is there, and what a heck of a thing to know. And I also know there's a lot of expertise there, and let me just comment that I think that's one of the things that needs to be valued in this reorganization, is how it sets this effort up to take full advantage of not only resources but expertise, templates, whatever you want to call it, that already exist in this organization. And, again, at the risk of taking government to a level of where some people, you know, might question it, look no further than Fountain Avenue. And I can tell you that the success and the effort and everything that's in place in the Planning Department in that area moved a couple of things forward in this area over the last six or eight months, and I think we all know at least one that I'm talking about. So, there's stuff there, folks, and I'll tell you what, we'd be remiss if we didn't draw upon it and utilize it. And along with that, I might just say, in an intangible, there's a strong ethic in this organization, and I know it exists on the part of a lot of the people who will be key to making this a success, those that haven't been hired yet, to see this community prosper and thrive. That's there. These are the same people, a lot of them, that are providing background support services for some of the PR activities in the past, who, you know, people don't necessarily know that. But it's happening, and I want it to happen in a much more natural, more ready fashion, and I want, I want, well, I want it to be as efficient and as effective as it possibly can.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I'm excited about that.
Okay, we'll go on to our minutes tonight. Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the reading of the minutes for November twenty-six, two thousand thirteen, City Commission meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meeting be prepared by the city clerk be approved as written. Second.
Any discussion on this? City clerk, please.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye. Under motions, Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the following documents be received and filed: Certificates of Liability Insurance, SuperCrete, Lonnie Wiggins Concrete, BCD Incorporated, Associated Engineers Incorporated, Right-Away Bond for BCD Incorporated, Commissioners' Deed for Ten Sixteen South Fifth Street, deed with Henry and Niva Rudy for Five Eleven North Fifth Street, Agreements and Contracts, Interlocal Agreement for Acceptance and Administration of an Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant JAG Award, Contract with Kinsey Lawn and Landscape for Grounds Maintenance of Approximately One Hundred and Thirty City-Owned Properties, Notices Cancellation for Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, Kentucky for Five Thirty PM Tuesday, December third, two thousand thirteen, Planning Department Bid for Nine O Two South Fifth Street, Saner Properties LLC.
Second. Any discussion? City clerk?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye. Municipal orders, Commissioner Wilson, please.
Upon the recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Thank you. Hi, Cindy.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. For your approval tonight, we've got Personnel Actions, and these are just the typical Personnel Actions that have happened since our last meeting, including a couple of the fire acting pay, those things that we're required to pay per IFF contract, for example.
Thank you. Any questions for Cindy? Okay. City clerk?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye. Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order amending municipal order number one seven two eight, entitled, a municipal order adopting the fiscal year two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, position and pay schedule for the full-time employees of the City of Paducah, Kentucky be adopted.
Need a second.
Second.
For the position and pay table for your review and approval, we have, as you can see, removed from the budget totals the Paducah Renaissance Alliance Executive Director, Marketing Specialist, and Executive Assistant. And we moved two positions, one into the Planning Department as Downtown Development, one into the Parks Department as Special Events Coordinator. And it is, some of the normal, every, we present this document for your approval two to three times a year, and as we do that, we update the fire and police step increases. We do positions that have been vacated or filled, and we update that. Also, as we placed and looked at where to place the positions in the departments and at what level and pay grade, which is next for your review, it showed us that we needed to move the Community Development Planner from an L to an M. Also, there was one title change in the Police Department, moving patrol clerks, excuse me, removing patrol clerks and naming them records clerks, as we were recommended to do in the pay, or in the compensation study.
Any questions? City clerk?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. I move that a municipal, I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order, amending municipal order number seventeen twenty-seven, entitled, a municipal order adopting the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen pay grade schedule for the employees of the City of Paducah, Kentucky be adopted.
Second. Okay, Cindy.
Okay. So, the additions to this are a little bit easier. We've got the Downtown Development Specialist Title that was added, the Special Events Coordinator, both as Ms., moving the Community Development Planner from L to M, and then there's a correction. The Planner One was supposed to be at an L, and that correction was made.
How many alphabet letters do we have?
We have to double A.
Okay.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, okay. Twenty-seven letters. Any questions? City clerk?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to obtain a two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen Matching Insurance Services Safety Grant Award in the amount of six thousand dollars from the Kentucky League of Cities for the purchase of two security cameras be adopted.
Second.
City manager?
I'd like to introduce tonight Cheryl Chino. She's our new grants administrator. And Cheryl, if you want to take just a minute and tell us just a bit about yourself, where you're coming from, and whether you're married to anybody else in the city organization, those kind of things.
Yes, I'm married to Stephen in the IT department, and please don't hold that against me.
Not at all. Very good.
I come from the Green River Area Development District with fifteen years of experience working with communities on a variety of... with communities on a variety of initiatives, including grants administration and project development, so I worked for seven counties and 27 cities, so coming to work for just the city of Paducah has been refreshing, I can focus on one community's needs instead of trying to focus on that of several, so, but tonight, I'm presenting to you the Kentucky League of Cities Safety and Liability Grants, maximum eligible grant amount is $6,000 with a 50-50 match, we are proposing the purchase and installation of two security cameras, as well as training at the Kentucky Municipal Environmental Safety and Health Association Conference, total project is $12,000, again, we're applying for the maximum of $6,000 with a $6,000 match from the Human Resources Department and the Engineering Department, and that's it in a nutshell, if you have any questions, I'll have you to answer them.
Is there a place designated for those security cameras?
I knew you would ask that, no, there's not at this time, we have tossed around a few different locations, a couple on the Greenway Trails, as well, there's some cameras out there that are not functioning properly, so we look to replace those, we're still evaluating what's the best option with those cameras.
Okay.
And again, we're proposing two at this time, however bids come in a little bit better, we may be able to purchase a third.
Thank you.
You're welcome, welcome.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
Ordinances adoption, Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2013-78052, and authorizing the mayor to execute Change Order Number One with Midstates Construction for the Noble Park Pool Renovations Phase II Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The City of Paducah amends ordinance number 2013-78052 regarding Change Order Number One for the Noble Park Pool Renovations Phase II Project to include the removal and rebuild of exterior wall at the concession stand, the removal of an extra concrete slab, and additional plumbing work in the amount of $22,958.72, therefore increasing the total contract price to $162,565.72.
Second. Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Again, here goes, it's a long one. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, and ordinance revealing, repealing ordinance number 2012-6-7929, and adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky Revised Annual Budget for the Fiscal Year July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013, by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of the city government. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The City of Paducah repeals ordinance 2012-6-7929 at estimated revenues and resources and appropriated funds for 2012, and adopts a revised budget for fiscal year 2013, that reflects all adjustments made throughout the fiscal year and any adjustments required by the independent financial auditors. The appropriations of the city government for a total of $64,806,300, oh, zero, $35, and summarized by fund as follows: General, $32,478,620, small grants, $46,475, MAP, mutual aid, MAP, $1,536,715, investment, $4,687,780, CDBG, $472,790, home, $583,610, telecom, $275,500, E911, $1,593,735, court awards, $50,285, debt, $2,979,135, CIP, $6,373,010, bond, $287,810, solid waste, $4,555,345, civic center, $78,250, rental, $403,210, radio depreciation, $139,885, fleet, $521,140, fleet trust, $86,965, self insurance, $919,740, health insurance, $4,216,885, PRA, $40,670, and AEP, AEPF, PF, PF, and TRSTS, I would assume those are the firefighter and police trusts, $1,758,480, for a grand total of $64,806,35, and thanks to John Perkins or somebody for leaving off the pennies.
Second.
Oh, he has them accounted for there.
I'm sure he does, but it whitened my load a bit.
Any discussion? City Clerk, please.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Finance Director to Pay for the Emergency Repair of the Electric Motor Serving Pump Number Five Located at Floodwall Station Number Two, 1416 North Sixth Street." This ordinance is summarized as follows: The Finance Director is hereby authorized to pay Industrial Maintenance and Engineering Corporation in the amount of $38,000 for the emergency repair of the electric motor serving pump number five located at Floodwall Station Number Two, 1416 North Sixth Street.
Seconded.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Lynwood Chrysler Dodge Hyundai LLC in the amount of $112,721.60 for sale to the City of four police interceptors pursuit vehicles for use by the Paducah Police Department, authorizing the possible addition, purchase of up to two additional police vehicles prior to June 30, 2014, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The City of Paducah accepts the bid of Lynwood Chrysler Dodge Hyundai LLC in the total amount of $112,721.60 for four 2014 Dodge Charger police vehicles for use by the Paducah Police Department, and approves the purchase of up to two additional police vehicles at a unit bid price of $28,180.40 for use by the Paducah Police Department, and the city may need to purchase additional vehicles prior to June 30, 2014. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Lynwood Chrysler Dodge Hyundai LLC for the purchase of the police vehicles.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter Six, Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The City of Paducah hereby amends Section Six-4 Operating Hours for Retail Purposes of Chapter Six, Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, to allow alcohol sales during the hours polls are open for a primary, regular, school, or special election.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaler?
Aye.
We'll go with two ordinances introduction, and we do not vote on these tonight. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a Strategic Health Risk Advisor and Strategic Benefit Placement Service contract with Pillen-Holland Financial Group for administration of the City of Paducah's health insurance. This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a Strategic Health Risk Advisor and Strategic Benefit Placement Services contract with Pillen-Holland Financial Group in the amount of $71,900 payable in four equal installments of $17,975 each for administration services pertaining to the administration of the City of Paducah's health insurance. An additional fee of $200 per hour, subject to a minimum retainer of $5,000, will be charged for services requested by the city or the city's legal counsel for issues that arise in connection with employer and employee bargaining, legal matters, disputes, or other similar issues. This contract is for the 2014 calendar year.
Need a second?
Second.
Hi Cindy.
Hi. I wanted to point out that the second part of the $200 per hour, we have not had to pull the trigger on that type of consultation from Greg, the consultation that we get from him, the advisor fee that we pay him pays for all of his extraordinary consultative services. If we had some sort of extraordinary year that gives us a framework that we could, that we could pay for his services. The advisor fee portion of it is the same as last year at $65,000. The, there is a new piece, the data analytics piece, this is a piece that he talked about in his presentation to you on October 22, that is a crucial piece that we need to be able to drill down into the data from Anthem to be able to provide care management services for our employees that struggle managing with chronic disease, and that edumetics layer that he talked to you about that we're also going to discuss tonight.
So, this is something new we're doing.
The data, the $6,300 is a new piece of it, yes, and they went, in the last year, they have created the framework for these data analytics, $6,300 does not cover that cost, but it is a, covering a portion of that. I wanted to say also that the services that Greg Carlton provides for us, and Pillen-Holland, the whole team, Rhonda and Janice, and I don't want to start naming them because I'll leave people out, but they do, they do such a great job for us, I guess, most recently just renegotiating our Anthem contract, the most financially rewarding piece of the consultation that he does for us is his ability to negotiate with Anthem, to propose a new level of thinking like an edumetics contract. We really, if you look at our proposals before adding data analytics and an edumetics-type layer to our services, just the fixed costs alone of our program went down $130,000, and if you look at expected claims liability that Anthem uses to calculate, as well as our maximum liability, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars of difference, and that's something that, you know, we couldn't just really get smarter internally or be able to manage that, so.
How did you know I was gonna, I was gonna ask that question? How did you know to anticipate that?
Good idea.
Well, in fairness, I talked to Cindy, because, you know, I'm new, and I didn't understand, but it was a good conversation, and this is kind of the genesis of this one, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the rates for consulting and management services for chronic health conditions for full-time city employees covered by the city's group health insurance plan with Edumetics LLC, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the City of Paducah approves an agreement for services with Edumetics LLC for consulting and management services for chronic health conditions for full-time city employees covered by the city's group health insurance plan with Edumetics LLC. There will be a one-time fee of $7,000, $7,100 with a program management fee, and a 10% share of cost savings calculated by comparison to a baseline of claims data that is to be recalculated every six months. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute said agreement. The initial term of the agreement shall be for two years and shall begin on January 1, 2014, and end on December 31, 2015.
And the contract that I, that we submitted in your packet on Friday was a draft, and I-
Need a second, just a minute.
Oh, second.
Sorry, I'm used to-
Go ahead now.
In your packet, you received a draft of this contract, and I can point out some of the changes that were made in this final package.
Thank you.
I received some additional feedback from Glenn Denton today, and I would like to thank John Perkins and Audra Herndon for their efforts, and have been working, obviously, with Greg Carlton and the CEO of Edumetics, Alice Sissel, she's been great with every, this is a, this is a new frontier, and we have met it with a lot of questions, and every question or concern that we would bring forward to her for consideration, she was very gracious and made every, every change we asked her to consider. So, the framework of what you see as far as the cost components did not change from Friday in that packet, that's all the same, some of the limitations of liability language, there was some different language in mediation if we ever had to get to a point where, so that is the type of language change that happened between Friday and what you see in front of you today.
So per employee is for the employee utilizing the service, it's not for every employee?
That is correct.
Only if they're utilizing.
And we refer to this as a cohort, and in the, in the presentation that Greg made in October, we anticipated having 179 employees invited to this, to this edumetics piece.
So it's on, if the employee feels like they need this, or if you, if you look at their data and feel that they need it?
It's based on their claims data that they would get an invitation from edumetics, and if their claims data suggests that they are medicated or have diagnosis codes for diabetes, hypertension, or hyperlipidemia, then they would get an invite to go down this track. We would, we would limit any additional offerings down this track, but we've, we've written the contract to give us that flexibility in case there's a case here or there where we've got an employee who's pre-hypertensive, or we can just make a case to be able to decide whether to, to go there.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you Cindy.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay, this'll be a good one. I think this one, I think we're all pretty excited about this one. I move, or at least I am, I think everybody is, I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Approving Hotel Development Agreement Amongst the City of Paducah, Kentucky Convention Hotel LLC, David Puckett, Todd M. Clark, John M. Clark, David B. Jones, Glenn R. Malone, Eddie Corley, and Garrett Forbes Mathau, with respect to a public project, authorizing the execution of the hotel agreement, development agreement, and other documents related thereto." This is summarized as follows: This ordinance authorizes the City of Paducah, Kentucky, City, to approve a hotel development agreement with Paducah Convention Hotel LLC, a Kentucky Limited Liability Company, David M. Puckett, Todd M. Clark, John M. Clark, David B. Jones, Glenn R. Malone, Eddie Corley, and Garrett Forbes Mathau, for the development and construction of an upscale hotel on city-owned real property generally located along and near Fourth Street and Executive Boulevard in downtown Paducah adjacent to a publicly-owned convention center generally known as Julian Carroll and Paducah Expo Convention Center.
Second. Steve?
The hour is late, and I will try to be brief, I was gonna go through some PowerPoint slides, but I don't think there's anybody that can, can take any more PowerPoint tonight, so let me, let me just go over what it is that this agreement is, is trying to do. The, the mayor said one thing during the press conference, that what's different about the previous announcements by the city is it didn't have a loan attached to it, and what else is different is we've never reduced what we've agreed to do in writing, that has never happened before in all the previous attempts to develop, and, and we have, after a significant period of time in discussing and negotiating, we are presenting a document to you that, that sets forth the responsibilities that they will take on in exchange for what the city will, will do to complete the public-private partnership, and let me provide those to you in summary form. The developer will build a 120-room upscale hotel, and by upscale, there's a definition in Smith Travel Research which, which identifies all the brands that are considered upscale. It has to be- considered upscale. It, it has to be from, from that list. They are responsible for the hiring of all architects and engineers and designers to complete that improvement. They have to spend a, a minimum of a hundred and seventy-five million. It doesn't sound consistent with some of the information we've put out about it being a nineteen-point-two million dollar project because the, the difference in that is, is the nineteen-point-two million dollar budget includes the contingency which may or may not get spent in the project. And it also, the nineteen-point-two million does include, as an operating business, it has to be fully supplied. It has to have cash reserve in, in the bank when the project starts. When you add up all those things in, in addition to the elements of construction, it adds a couple, almost two more million dollars to the project. But to complete the physical improvements, they have to invest at least seventeen-point-five million dollars. They have to have the hotel open and ready for occupancy by, by mid-2015. We know that this is a one-year, twelve-to-fourteen-month construction period. I would like to say they are ready to build tomorrow, but, but they are not. They still have to complete design. They still have to get all of the tax credits that are necessary for this project in, in place. And we expect four to five months will go by while those two things are going on. And they'll do as many of those things contemporaneously as, as possible, seek permits and, and then build. So I think that probably will not happen before May first at, at, at this point. They have to obtain all the funding that is necessary and, and, and that is a significant milestone that they have already completed. They have to maintain all, they have to apply for and receive tax credits from the Kentucky Tourism Pursuant to the Kentucky Tourism Development Authority. That is a, a, a process that requires a, a consultant, an outside consultant study and an application to the state, but those are, are obviously critical for the financing. They have to maintain all the licensing and, and permitting. There, there is, there is no breaks for them when it comes to permitting. Everything that you, you will see later on the document, one of the things we're doing is we will waive permit fees, but we will not be waiving any requirements for construction. They will have to develop and operate the hotel in conformity with, with all, all laws and regulations. They have to make, they have to do regular reporting to us. Quite significantly, they have to negotiate an operating agreement with the Convention Center Corporation. Convention Center Corporation is one of our, one of our sister agencies. They, they own the property. They get to decide who, who leases it and operates it. I've already met these guys. They've already done a considerable amount of discussion or are well on their way towards completing agreement, but it's, but it's a step yet to be done. They have to have performance bonds. They have to secure insurance on the property. They have to relocate all the utility lines. They have to pay all of their, their taxes when they're due. The occupancy stabilization fund that the, the agreement goes to great lengths to spell out, they have to contribute to that fund as well. Yes, the city puts three hundred thousand into it, but they put an additional two hundred thousand dollars into that fund. And they have to pay the, the city back, well, it's, it's bonds that will capitalize the, the tax credits. They pay those back with interest. They pay those back with the additional cost of issuance for those. And that will occur over a twelve-year period. You know, in, in return, the city transfers long-term. There are two tracks involved with this project. The hotel and some of the parking goes on six hundred north Fourth, the property that is on the, the city side of the flood wall. It cannot accommodate all the parking necessary for one-hundred-and-twenty-one-room hotel. So parking, some of the parking will be on the riverside of the flood wall. There will be a, a man door that will be cut through the, through the flood wall. We expect that will cost on the order of fifty thousand dollars. And the balance of the parking will be on the, the east side of the flood wall. That separate track is something that we will permanently just lease to them. That will not be transferred to them in, in way of, of ownership. Track one, the, the hotel track, we will continue to own that track for, for twenty years after they have made, completed all their obligations, which includes paying the city back everything that it put into it that had to be paid back and have successfully operated the hotel for twenty years. Then at that point, the, the track will convert over to them. No, nothing with regard to the Convention Center will, will, will be theirs. That always will remain a, a public property. We will provide nine hundred thousand dollars for so-called non-hotel improvements. That's the, the bridge that attaches the Convention Center to the hotel. That's the hole through the flood wall. That's the construct, construction of surface parking on the riverside of the flood wall, on the former site where the Executive Inn was, and for the balance of the money for kitchen improvements. We, as I said before, will waive permitting fees. We will issue taxable, key point, taxable general obligation bonds. Those bonds will be repaid by the tax credits that they will receive from the state, but it won't cover all of them. We expect it will cover all but five hundred thousand of it. The, the other five hundred thousand dollar piece will be financed by the transient room tax that is generated by the hotel that comes through the, the CBB. So this, the Convention Visitors Bureau becomes a important and critical partner in, in a portion of the, the financing. And the last part, or the last two parts are the stabilization agreement, which we talked about at the press conference. That is the, the five hundred thousand dollar fund that gets established for, be able to be used for sixty months. If revenue falls below, and we've set a target in the development agreement of seventy-four, that doesn't mean if rooms rent below seventy-four dollars. That is a, an industry metric that translates into a monthly revenue stream. And if they're not meeting their revenue streams, which can and does happen early in new hotels, the, the success of this hotel, there will be three sources. The, the general tourism transient visitors that come through the community, the, the rooms that are generated by the business community, and then the third part is the Convention Center business. Well, the Convention Center business will take them two to three years to build that business up. People that are planning shows in twenty, late twenty-fifteen, late sixteen, they're, they're making those decisions now. So they, they can't expect to have all of that business built up the first day. That will, that will take some time. So it's reasonable to expect that there, there may be some revenue issues in, in the, in the first few years. They'll be able to access that, that fund, but when they're above seventy-four, they have to replenish that fund and replenish that fund first. And then after five years, if there's anything outstanding, they have to repay that to the city within one year. And then the last thing is for a period of two years commencing from the signing of the development agreement, we've agreed that we would not offer an incentive to another hotel in the downtown area for a period of two years.
Thank you Steve.
Steve.
A lot of work went into it, I know. Stephen Jav, thank you.
Thank you.
Job well done. Thank you.
Both of you.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a local agreement between the city of Paducah and Paxton Park Municipal Golf Course Board. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to enter into a loan agreement in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand with Paxton Park Municipal Golf Course Board for capital improvement project and equipment needs for the Paxton Park Municipal Golf Course. The city will make the loan from the Fleet Enterprise Fund for a period of ten years. Annual payment on the loan will be twenty-two thousand five hundred plus annual accrued interest at a rate that reflects the earning on city demand deposits not to exceed two-point-five percent.
Second.
City Manager, you want to talk about?
The city has the opportunity to enhance the ability of the management of our municipal golf course to make improvements to the course by providing financing at a rate lower than what could otherwise be obtained in the commercial market, or for that matter through municipal bonding. So before you tonight is requested the Paxton Park Golf Course Board to borrow the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars over ten years period of time. It would be what we refer to as an internal fund borrowing. We have an enterprise fund that has sufficient reserves to float this loan over the period of ten years. Our objective for a return on it would be simply to receive back from the golf course the amount that we earn percentage-wise with one caveat that we would put a ceiling on that of two and a half percent. I think right now our demand deposit earning is somewhere in the one-half percent range. So try to put that high enough to where it would be somewhat unlikely that our demand deposit earning would exceed that over ten years. But folks, you never know with the economy being what it is. But it does provide some protection, some ceiling to the golf course on, on the other hand. So the finance office has determined that it is possible for us to do this. And with that ability, I, I heartily recommend your acceptance of this loan to the golf course.
I think it's a great way for us to be able to help them to make the improvements they want to do.
And I think, you know, Paxton Park is one of the finest municipal golf courses that I've ever seen. And it has excellent management. A few years ago, there was talk of, did we want to sell Paxton Park? We said, no, we do not. We told them to tighten their belt and to manage on what they had. And they've done a great job at that. But now they need some help to do the improvements to improve the park even more. And I think that's important. It's good that we can help them this way.
Agreed.
City Managers' Report.
Just a couple of things. The consultants that are reviewing the nine-one-one operation have been in town the last couple of days on doing some of their analysis, meeting with board members. I know Commissioner Gault met with them. I met with them and a number of others. They, again, are reviewing the entire operation and will be making some recommendations, I think, that can range everything from the governance to equipment to whether the facilities are adequate. Certainly staffing, I think, is the, the focus there. But they're taking a broad look and I think we're getting a pretty good amount of analysis done for what we're paying and, and this engagement. I think enjoys the support of the entire nine-one-one advisory board. So we look forward to the recommendations coming forward, hopefully in the next few weeks there. We had some unfortunate news last night that could have been much more unfortunate, but the, the property that the city recently purchased from Betty Owens, there was a fire there last night. Fortunately, Mrs. Owens got out. I've not been on scene, but I've talked to those who were and it sounds like the damage was very extensive. The likelihood of that being rebuilt, I would say, is very, very low. So again, I think our primary sentiments are relief that Mrs. Owens was not hurt and we will move forward. The property is insured, I can assure you that. And we will be working with the insurance company to effect the recovery that that coverage was intended to give us. So. I think as far as the, the weather event and the snow removal, I think we've said about all that can be said and that needs to be said. It, it was a fairly unusual event for Paducah. I think most people realize that. And you can always do more with more, but at, at a cost. And certainly, I think that what we are doing and what we're able to do does reflect a lot of resourcefulness. I can assure everybody that we are working maximum hours within the allowances of, of the certifications that our plow operators have. They are regulated, by the way, in the number of hours that they can work. We were using people cross-departmentally. We can't plow material that isn't there. So you just have to, in this particular situation, I think, deal with what you have. And, and when you've got freeze thaw cycles going on and, and snow coming down, sort of in between, it creates a particularly difficult situation. So, and I, I can say that from experience being a Yankee and dealing with a lot more snow than, than what this was. But when you get those weather patterns like this, it makes it difficult. So I think that's all I have. I think we have-
Did Mark have something to say? Other than about the rescheduling?
Yes, that's what it is. Just remind everybody that the Christmas Parade is rescheduled for this Saturday. Same time, same channel, but everything else is same. And we're probably, if weather holds and, and that, we're probably sitting at close to ninety percent of the people who were originally scheduled are going to be there.
And the candy cane hunt also-
Candy cane hunt is also rescheduled for ten o'clock on Saturday morning at Kyler Park.
So this weekend's going to be really busy around Paducah because everything that was supposed to happen last week has been moved this weekend.
So if you're going to the symphony, you have time to go to, march in the parade and get over to the symphony. So.
Say, Commissioners, you have any comments tonight?
Nice night.
Good night.
Yeah, it's been a good night in Paducah.
Been a pretty good night.
I know we postponed the boat launch ribbon cutting, so we'll have that in the spring.
Maybe we can do the boat launch and the Greenway Trail ribbon cutting at the same time and have a big bicycle ride and have a really great-
Sounds like we need to get that events planner on board.
Do we have any public comments tonight? Okay, meeting's adjourned.
Oh, we have an executive session?
Oh, are we? Are we?
Thought we were.
Well, he's the city manager. He doesn't seem to know anything about it.
Tell me we were. I asked earlier and they said we were.
Okay, yeah. That, that issue?
Are you?
Okay, we'll have an executive session tonight. Who has that?
I do. I move that the board go into closed session for discussions of matters pertaining to the following topics. Issues which might lead to the disappointment dismissal or disciplining of an employee is permitted by KRS six-one-point-eight-one-zero-one-F.
Second.
City Clerk?
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. We will not be making any decisions when we come back out from executive session. So, meeting's adjourned.
Meeting's adjourned.